Good evening, and I would like to call this May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, Board of Education meeting for the Public Schools of Robinson County to order. If you will, we would take a moment of silence. We'd like to remember Chandler Burke, a freshman at Purnell Sweat, and Kayden Dowell, fourth grader at Peterson. So if you would, just take a minute. Our pledge of allegiance by Lummerton High School, J R O T C. If you would, please stand.
Squad, halt, left, face. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right, face, forward, march.
You may be seated. Adoption of the agenda. I need a motion and a second. I've got a motion by Mr. Henry Brewer, a second by Ms. Melissa Ocean to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. I need a motion, approval of minutes, open session. I've got a motion by Mr. Gentry, a second by Ms. Monroe.
Mr. Chair, this is for the open session minutes of April eleventh and April twenty-three.
Okay, that's recognized.
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. The last couple days, we have been, we've had guests here at the central office. DPI, Needs-Based Assessment, District and Regional Support Team is here. Ms. Wendy Dorsey-Carr.
Good evening, Chairman Lawson, Dr. Williamson, and board members. I'd like to introduce our team from the state that is visiting us today and tomorrow. So I'm going to ask each of them to stand. Ms. Jamie Stroud, Ms. Dr. Gertrude Lyons, Wyneisha Wilkins, and Jessica Grant. And I'm going to ask Ms. Stroud just to come out for a moment and just give us a one-sentence overview of why you're here, and then, thank you for joining us today. Yeah.
I say a lot of words, so I know that was intentional. Good evening, it is a pleasure to be back here. We, our team, from the Department of Public Instruction, specifically District and Regional Support, which is the division we serve inside of the department. We have spent the majority of this year leading comprehensive needs assessments at each of the schools in Robinson County. So we have been to every single one with teams of four from the Department of Public Instruction to really identify trends in the schools and to call out things the schools do very well, as well as areas for improvement. And we've been meeting with the schools, follow-up support, to meet quarterly with the schools and help them on that school improvement journey. So the next step for that, when we work with the whole district, is to come do the same with the central office staff. So we are here today and tomorrow, serving, meeting with all of the district members, the cabinet. Some of the board members met with us today, met with lots of different directors and staff. And we will leave tomorrow with bulleted items, to be followed by a report later, that also identifies things that the district is doing very well as a whole, and then some suggested areas for improvement as well. We have thoroughly enjoyed getting to know people in the community. We kind of feel embedded here, and we joke that the front office desk at Holiday Inn Express, I don't even have to tell them my name anymore. They just hand me a key and tell me what my room number is. So thank you for the hospitality that has been provided to our teams as we have spent so much time here this school year.
Thank you. Information items, and I would just like to say, the crowd that's here tonight, it does our soul good to see parents, grandparents, students, and staff being recognized. We'd like to appreciate you for being here, thank you. So information items, NCAE Award Presentation, NCAE Board Member.
Good afternoon, Dr. Williamson, Chairman Lawson, and Board Members. My name is Audrey Strong. I'm here tonight to present an award on behalf of the North Carolina Association of Education's Division of Principals and Administrators, and I want to tell you a little bit about what's required for the principal to receive that honor, and then we'll talk about who it is. The NCAE Principal of the Year, the Assistant Principal of the Year, the Superintendent of the Year, and the NCAE Central Office Administrator of the Year is presented annually by the North Carolina Association of Education Division of Principals and Administrators. These awards recognize the outstanding contributions to staff, students, and public education as a whole by members who work in administrative roles. Nominees are judged on professional practice, advocacy for the profession, community engagement, and leadership skills. Recipients of these distinguished awards are chosen based on their responses to questions developed by an interview committee comprised of select members of the division's board via face-to-face interview or phone interview. During the interview, the candidates are asked to share a new initiative that they have been involved in during the year, as well as other items. Winners are recognized with special presentations in honorary local school districts like tonight. To qualify for this award, the nominee has to be a member of the NCAE and also the National Education Association. They have to be, the nominee must sign the nomination form. The candidate that's nominated for the award must be interviewed via the phone or in person, and the winner may be asked to serve in several positions or capacities with the NCAE Division of Principals and Administrators. In the winning applicant's conclusion statement to the interview question, the applicant responded. "They are deeply committed to demonstrating instructional expertise, fostering creativity, and championing innovation as an elementary school principal. Together, let us continue to build an educational community where every child is inspired, every teacher is empowered, and every achievement is celebrated." The winner tonight will be presented with a plaque and a monetary award in the amount of one thousand dollars. On behalf of the North Carolina Association of Education, the National Education Association, and the Robinson Association of Education, please welcome and help me congratulate the North Carolina Association of Education's two thousand and twenty-four Principal of the Year to the Principal at Peterson Elementary School, Mr. Brian Freeman. He's not yet giving my money first. Isn't it pretty? Dr. Williamson, Mr. Lawson, y'all want to take a picture? Yes, sir.
Now, you need to be in there.
I'd like to start off by saying thank you to Chairman Lawson and each board member for giving me the wonderful, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to come home to Red Springs to be a principal at Peterson Elementary School. And to Dr. Williamson and your cabinet, thank you so much for your support and encouragement in this endeavor. And board members, did you know Dr. Williamson tells principals no sometimes? Can y'all believe that? But what I want to say about Dr. Williamson is that he's just a great mentor, and I thank him for those no's because he's challenged me to think differently, to make better decisions, and to ensure that every student has the opportunity for success at Peterson. And I know you have a long agenda, but I'm just going to close with a part that we talked about in the interview process. We've all joined the profession of education because we choose to be professionals, to be educators. And so the work that I've been able to do at Peterson Elementary School, I talk about how it's impacted me very differently. Because I attended Peterson as a kid, my older sister did, and my mom's here and she retired after twenty-eight years as a teacher assistant. So being able to come home to your community has really enlightened me that this work is personal because the students that live in the street in front of me and beside me and behind me ride the bus every day to Peterson Elementary School. And I know that they're counting on me to ensure that they have an opportunity to be successful. I know they're counting on me to ensure that they have a great education and that they're safe every day. And so I just want to thank everyone for their support and know that this work is not only professional, but it's very personal to me, and I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Next, we have Public Schools of Robinson County, two thousand and twenty-four Battle of the Books winner, Dr. Wendy Dorsey-Carr and Cindy Humphrey.
Good evening, Chairman Lawson, board members, and Superintendent Williamson. I'm here to present the Battle of the Books winners for two thousand and twenty-four. First, I would like to commend all our media coordinators because they have worked really hard getting their students prepared for this competition. And at this time, we go start with our third grade, second and third grade teams, and we go ask the board members to come up, take a picture. We're not going to shake individual hands because of time, but if you would, Ms. Jessica. Board members, I'm going to call individual names, and they're going to come and take a team picture, and then we go to the next group. And I'm going to try to get out the picture. First, we're going to start with our second and third grade. Third place winner was Union Elementary, if you would come on up. Union Elementary. Students are Tranford, Sancho, Joshua Phillips, Daniel Galligan, Kayden Locklear, Kayden Lowry, Kessley Scott, Coach Cassandra Bell, and Karen Rebels, and Principal Katrina Locklear. Y'all stand clear. And I apologize if I... Okay. Our second place is Matnoya Elementary, Macy Blake, Ariel Chavis, Shannon Cook, Gabriella Harris, Larry Hunt, Emily Jacobs, Miles Locklear, Coaches Ashley Clark, Nancy Panetta, Erica Oxny, and Principal Charles Locklear. Thank you, Matnoya. And our first place winner is East Robinson Primary. We have Kayla Allen, Reese Baffero, Angel Garcia Lozano, Jake Harden, Nolan Ingram, Bruce Starre, Coach Letitia Hunt, and Christina Blackwater, Principal Chad Brewer. Come on up. And I would like to say, with our second and third grade, we are the only district in the state that has a second and third grade Battle of the Books, so we're getting it prepared for the next level. So thank y'all, thank you, board members, the ones that approved for them to have a second and third grade, because that's really great. Now we go recognize our fourth and fifth grade. Third place is St. Paul's Elementary. It's kind of loud in here. St. Paul's Elementary. We have Donalney Bridges, Edgar Garasco Gomez, Jayden Cruz Neal, Daniel Gonzalez, Elizabeth Jimmy, Andrew McKeithen, Melanie Mahilla Lopez, April Houndey, Patricio Nuva Bardillos, and Angelica Cadava. Coaches Donna Dyer Jacobs and Brittany Norton, Principal Lisa Washington. I apologize about the names. Thank you, St. Paul's Elementary. Second place, Carroll Middle School. Carroll, can you come on in? Lauren Hernandez, Elijah Elliott, Olivia Green, Justice Ingram, Bryson Jacobs, Briella McGlanny, Carmen Mariah, and Zarian Rogers. Coaches Erin Hunt and Adrian Sinclair Davis, Principal Christopher Burton. Thank you, Carroll Middle. Now for our first place winner. This team actually went on to regionals to represent Robinson County. We have Brooks Baffero, Kennedy Chavis, Natalie Chavis, Allison Cruz, Lucy Connor, Joseph Hewitt, Charlie Howard, Bryson Jones, and Kessley Rogers. Coach Courtney Chavis and Shandora Chavis, and Principal Kendall Hamilton. Coach Courtney Chavis and Shandora Chavis, and Principal Kendall Hamilton. Thank you, Littlefield. Now for our middle school. Third place, Lomerton Junior High. Brianna Badilla, Brian Lopez, Zachary. Wait, just come on. Bella Marra, Erin Morales, Ephron Rojas Ortiz, Michelle Rojas Ortiz, Coach Doshy Kirkwood, and Principal Dr. Jermaine Watson. Our second place winner, and this was, it was a difference of one point. Matnoya, second place, Kaylee Bolin, Aliyah Falk, Aliyah Kearns, Emerson Locklear, Sheila Mahilla, Madison Norris, Coach Ashley Clark, and Nancy Panetta, Principal Charles Locklear. Thank you, Matnoya. And for first place, Middle School. We have Littlefield Middle School again. Madison Chadwick, Brooklyn Hunt, Tahanne McLean, Madison Platt. Coach Courtney Chavis, Principal Kendall Hamilton. Thank you for our middle school. Now our last group would be high school. Third place was Red Springs High School. I thank the media coordinator coaches here, Trace, Ms. Tracy Byrd. Her team had athletic banquet tonight, so they. There, so. Second place, Purnell Sweat. Ellery Barton, Alah Chavis, Kirsten Dow, Lori Locklear, Constance Locklear, Sheridan Oxenine. Coach Dawn Locklear, she could not be here, she, her daughter had peeing, and Principal Clyde Lovina. Thank you. Ms. Tracy, did you want to get a picture? Did you want to get a picture? And last but not least, our first place high school winners. St. Paul's High School, first place in the district, and it also placed third place in the regional four. Ruth Berman, Leon Brager, Finkley, Elena Hernandez, Vescquez, Angel Cabella, Katie Flores, Alexandra Hernandez, and James McCoy. Coach Bonnie Rogers, Principal Jason Suss. Congratulations, and thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Where we at here? Right here. Okay, I've got you. Okay. The Governor's School recipient, Teacher Fellows, Gates Scholar, Dr. Deborah Dallas, and Ms. Jadael Halt.
Good evening Chairman Lawson, Superintendent Williamson, and Board Members. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Lila Hammond, your school representative, to come forward. Okay, so it is my honor to recognize Ms. Lila Hammond for her acceptance and attendance at the North Carolina Governor's School. Lila is an early graduate, St. Paul's High. Okay, and she attended the North Carolina Governor's School 2023 Summer Section. Lila's selected discipline for Governor's School of English, and she attended at the Brutus College Campus. So I want to just pair a few words on Lila's reflection. So I'm going to quote you, okay, Lila? Okay. She says, "Everyone always seems to have the same sentiment, which is Governor's School was a life-changing experience. And I would definitely agree to it. I have never met a group of more open-minded and understanding people, not only the students, but the teachers as well. I wouldn't try the experience I got there for anything in the world because no other experience could compare to it." So we want to say, Lila, we are very proud of you. And we hope you share your experience from Governor's School with you as you continue your educational journey. Congratulations, Lila Hammond.
Next is Informal Educator Award in Science, Mathematics, and Technology Education. Ms.
We still have Teaching Fellow.
Okay. Dr. Wendy Dorsey-Carr is what it has on me, I think. I'm sorry. Ms. Jadael.
Good evening Chairman Lawson, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, and Board Members. I want to present the Teaching Fellow Scholarship recipients this year. Our first one that we have is Ms. Kaylee Hunt. She lives in the community of Elrod, North Carolina, where she has lived her whole life. She's the daughter of Lucille Locklear and Caleb Hunt, and the granddaughter of Louis and Preston Locklear and Mary Jones and Richard Hunt. In her 11th grade year, she was selected as a junior marshal due to her ranking as the, in number seven in her graduating class. Now currently is a 12th grader. She added to her list of accomplishments in January. She has passed her state board test and has become a licensed CNA. Her plans after high school are to attend East Carolina University with the help of the Gates Scholarship and go into the nursing program and want to become a travel, labor, and delivery nurse after college. She knows that her career and her wishes to pursue will not be easy to achieve, but she will remain headstrong in order to accomplish these goals that she has set forth for herself. Everything that she is, she owes to her family and the good Lord above who continues to bless her every day. If it hadn't been for them, she wouldn't be where she is today. So let me apologize, this is for the Gates Scholar, Ms. Kaylee Hunt. Y'all bear with me, we have a long list tonight. So next for Purnell Sweat High School, we have Ms. Harmony LaShay Brooks. She's the proud daughter of Brad and Candace Brooks. Harmony will graduate from Purnell Sweat High School with her high school diploma this June as cum laude in Pembroke, North Carolina. She's a member of the American Indian Student Association, ACES, American Indian Science and Engineering Society, National Technical Honor Society, Beta Club, and National Honor Society throughout her high school years. Harmony is also a member of the Purnell Sweat High School course. Harmony will begin her college career at the University of North Carolina at Pembroke to earn her Bachelor's of Science degree in elementary education. After graduation, she will continue to obtain her Master of Arts in Education from UNCP. Then hopefully will earn her doctorate at UNCP in elementary education. Harmony is a member of the Deep Branch Ministry Baptist Church, where she is a member of the church choir, youth group, community outreach, and assists in the sound room during service. Harmony has served as an international ministry in the Philippines and will continue this ministry work this summer in 2024. She is looking forward to helping her community by teaching elementary students and continuing her career and becoming superintendent one day. Ms. Harmony LaShay Brooks is a recipient of the Gates Millennium Scholars Award. Next, we have Ms. Kayla J. Oxenine, who lives in Maxton, North Carolina. As a 12th grader at PSRC Early College, she has been on the A.D. Honor Roll in National Honor Society and a participant of the Beta Club. She also participates in many more school clubs such as Robotics, Christian Club, Performing Arts Club, and the Choir. Helping plan and decorate more school events throughout the year has been a thing that has been a passion for her as well. She's also an Eagle Scout in the BSA Scouting, NYLT Certified National Youth Leadership Training, BSA Lifeguard, and a camp counselor at Bowers BSA Camp. She teaches camp year-round, online, and in person. She's also, she also has a part-time job at a local food line, as a local food line as a cashier year-round. She participates in many church activities as choir, Sunday devotional, and the food bank, and she helps plan and set up church events. She plans on becoming a fifth grade science teacher. This is because of her love for teaching and science. She's tutored fellow classmates and other students from middle school all the way into high school. She really found her love for teaching and scouts in summer camp. Waking up each morning at camp to a class full of eager kids really brightens her day. And to see how now the years later, her teaching has been such an impact and really grafting and has been gratifying and heartfelt. She enjoys sharing her knowledge with others and seeing them each and every day. It's been very, it's very much like a never-ending grapevine of cycle and knowing that I am and can be the start of something great, she says, and very inspiring and humble. She chose teaching to help the next generation grow and prosper. So Ms. Kaylee, Kayla, sorry, J. Oxenine, PSRC Early College Teaching Fellows. Ms. Haley Luder is a senior at Lomerton Senior High School. She loves to sing and act and has been performing for several years. After graduating from Lomerton Senior High, she plans to attend UNCP with the goal of becoming a theater arts teacher. She is one of our NC Teaching Fellows recipients. Ms. Kenley Freeman is a senior at Lomerton Senior High School. She plans to attend the University of North Carolina at Pembroke in the fall and major in education. After obtaining her bachelor's degree, she plans to pursue a master's degree. She hopes to educate children in Robinson County and would like to give back to the education community that has educated her. Ms. Kenley Freeman is the NC Teaching Fellow recipient. And our final North Carolina Teaching Fellow recipient is Mr. Junior Torres Diaz. He's a senior at St. Paul's High School. During his high school career, he has been involved in several student organizations, including serving as St. Paul's High School FFA president from 2022 to 2024, and the St. Paul's High School Beta Club Vice President from 2022 to 2024. He serves the St. Paul's High School JROTC Bulldog Battalion S4. He's also a member of the St. Paul's National Honor Society. During Junior's free time, he likes to hang out with his friends and has a part-time job at Chick-fil-A on Roberts Avenue where he is a team leader. Junior loves to spend time with family and loves to play with his two dogs, Chase and Becky. Junior can also play the trumpet. After high school, Junior plans to attend NC State and major in agriculture education with a concentration in horticulture. Junior hopes to be an FFA advisor and someday teach along with his current AG agricultural teachers, Mr. Kyle Chavis and Mrs. Kenan McQueen, O'Queen. Mr. Kyle Chavis and Mrs. Kenan McQueen, O'Queen.
Yes, for three more. So, good evening once again. Tonight, we'd like to recognize one of our own. This past week, Amanda Graham achieved the highest distinction that a fellow in the Leveraged Leadership Institute Fellowship Relay can earn, Platinum Plus Leader. This means that her leadership work with her leaders was rated by their team as exceptional in all five levers of leadership: observation feedback, leading weekly data meetings, leading planning meetings, leading equity-centered culture, data-driven instruction, and professional development. Only a small fraction of every cohort earns this distinction, and it means that leaders in and beyond our professional community will be traveling to see her and learn from her action in years to come. We wish her a hearty congratulations and excitement for all the learning and growing that will spring from Amanda's exceptional leadership. Congratulations. So I'd like to recognize another one of our great team members, Ms. Connie, Dr. Connie Locklear, for providing engaging STEM experiences that cultivate a passion for scientific discovery in all students and expanding that impact through exposure, cultural representation, and real-world connections. It is the Informal Educator Award in Science, Mathematics, and Technology Education. This award recognizes a North Carolina informal educator, an educator who works outside the traditional classroom, who excels in engaging young people pre-K-12 in science, math, and technology activities and experiences. Dr. Connie Locklear. So I'd like to recognize one more of our team members tonight, Susan Miller Hendricks, for creating and framing engaging STEM lessons and activities in the cultivation of robust collaborative partnerships that serve students, teachers, and the community. The Outstanding Instructional Leader Award in Science, Mathematics, and Technology Education. This award recognizes a North Carolina instructional leader who excels in fulfilling the mission of the North Carolina Science, Mathematics, and Technology Education Center. Congratulations, Susan.
Next, under Information Items HB 1068, Partisan Board of Education Elections, our board attorney, Mr. Schwartz.
Good evening. House Bill 1068 is a bill that was introduced by Representative Jared Lowry in the General Assembly, and it was introduced last week. And on May 9th, it passed first reading in the House, which is a formality, and was referred to Local Government Committee at that time. It's, that committee meets tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. The most recent version of the agenda for that committee meeting tomorrow does not include this bill on the agenda, but that can change at any point in time. That committee has a lot of bills pending before it right now. What this bill would do would be to change the method of election for this board from a nonpartisan to a partisan basis. It would also change the method of electing at-large members of the board as well. There's been a push in the General Assembly in recent sessions to change a lot of boards of education to partisan elected boards from nonpartisan elected boards. Just to give you an idea of that, prior to 2019, there were 25, we have 115 boards of education in North Carolina. Prior to 2019, 25 of them were elected on a partisan basis, and the rest were elected on a nonpartisan basis. There were five added in 2019. Those were Surrey, Burke, Caldwell, Lincoln, and Craven Counties. Two were removed in 2019, Cleveland and Guilford. Those have been the only two that have been removed since then. So the net result of that was, in 2019, that changed from 25 to 28 partisan elected boards. We're now up to 38 just since 2019 with the passage of three session laws that added five boards at one time, Ash, Cabarrus, Henderson, McDowell, and Mitchell Counties. Pamlico County got added by separate legislation. And then Hickory City, Newton Conover City, Catawba County, and Polk County got added by separate legislation. Those 10 boards from those three pieces of legislation become partisan boards effective on this December 1, 2024, coming up. There's also a bill that passed to change the Alexander County Board of Education to partisan effective December 1, 2026. The legislation that was introduced for your board would change you effective in 2026 with the elections. It would also change the time when board members take office from July to December, based on election at the general election time instead of the primary election time. So to summarize this, there are currently laws on, there are currently 28 boards elected on a partisan basis. As of this December, that will go to 38. As of 2026, it'll go to 39. If you're added, it'll go to 40. And there are some other pieces of legislation to do this with a couple of other school boards as well that are pending. This has been an effort on the part of the Republicans in the General Assembly to change the boards to a partisan basis. And one of the things that is said when these bills are introduced is whether or not they heard from anybody back at the school board or in the local school system. So if you want your voice to be heard on this legislation, it's incumbent upon you to say something. Otherwise, when and if this bill comes up in committee or in the House or the Senate, the legislators who are pushing the bill will say, well, we introduced the bill, we didn't hear anything, we didn't hear any objections. So if you have any objections to this legislation, it's incumbent upon you to speak up and make those objections known. If you are in support of this, you can speak up and make your support known. I've had this with a number of different school systems, and several of them have passed resolutions stating their objection to being converted on a partisan basis, to a partisan basis. And, you know, right now, you know, it's not for me to say how you feel about this, Bill. It's up to you to say how you feel about the bill. And then if you want to take any action, you may consider a resolution or you may consider, you know, directing the chair or the chair in the eternity to contact legislators and make your positions known.
You know what I'm saying? I don't mean, we don't need to get that far yet. Mr. Terry and then Mr. Gray.
Mr. Schwartz, in your experience working with previous boards that have written resolutions in objection, how did those resolutions turn out or how did the votes turn out?
They've been converted to partisan boards of education. But the fact that they spoke and made their position known, I think, had some impact. Some of these bills fly through the General Assembly and some of them die.
Mr. Gray?
Mr. Randy, to my knowledge and checking back, I think our elections for this board has been the same way since inception. And me, for one, do not want to see it changed. I like the large thing like it is, and I don't, never see me agreeing to a partisan election. As I've told some of you, I don't know your affiliation, and I don't need to know it for this board to work. And from what I've found out too, Mr. Schwartz and Mr. Lawson, some sections or places where it gets to be partisan, then you get parties controlling how to board votes. And, you know, we get along, we do what we have to, we're gonna disagree, but I don't think we need party affiliations telling us or leading us in a vote. Sometimes we get criticized for not caring about children. I think that would lead more criticism for that because then it becomes a party affiliation. And I would like, with the discretion of Superintendent Mr. Schwartz, to send something to Raleigh if it's a resolution or whatever. And for my party, if we take a vote, I will say that I am against this bill.
Mr. Brewer?
Mr. Chair, I would like to echo the same thoughts. I don't see an advantage in school board becoming partisan. I see where this could influence politics into the school environment that we don't need because it's about education, it's not about politics. And also, it's gonna change the dynamics of how, just like Vontae and myself and Mr. Gentry are at-large. And now, I understand, Mr. Schwartz, that this bill's gonna state that it's gonna offer people the right to vote for three at-large. So I hope that does, the purpose of the at-large board members were to give equal representation opportunity. But I see where this could lead to more chaotic politics if we accept this, as stated. My, you know, I would love to see us make a resolution or whatever agreement would be here tonight to move forward and to expedite our feelings on this issue, on this bill.
Anyone else? Mr. Gentry?
I would just like to concur with what has just been said about this in that it opens the door for interests that are, could be contrary to the interests that this board or any board of education should have as its number-one priority, and that's the well-being of children. And when you incorporate political interest, then you're broadening the interest of so many different entities and special groups that are prioritized and gravitated around interests that are contrary. So outstanding concurrence of what's been said.
Anyone else? Trey?
I was just gonna say, actually, when we got this email, I spoke with Representative Lowry about it. And he is, I'll just tell you upfront, he is willing to talk about it and that sort of thing there. So the resolution may be the way we need to go, but at the same time, he's open. So we'll need a voice if you understand what I'm saying.
Dr. Emmanuel?
When they accept to, it would cause, I think, dissension because people, some would be more interested in the politics than achieving the goals of the system. So I agree with what's been said, that there's no value in it.
Okay. Anybody else?
And I just, I just wanna, I wanna agree as well. I don't feel that this board needs to turn to a partisan board or a partisan election. It's only gonna cause trouble that we don't need.
John, you got anything? Vontae? Let me say, let me say one thing, Vontae. Serving as an at-large board member and serving as a district, when I came on this board, when it was first, I'm saying, in the beginning, when it was first merged, the merger, that's the way it was set up, and I haven't seen a problem yet with it. I do see problems in the future if it's turned the other way, not to reflect the students and the educational process that we're trying to do here. And I'll just leave it there. It would have been nice to have known prior to it being put on the House floor by the representative, that he would have had our feelings on it, being that he is from Robinson County. But I don't guess that's the way it works in Raleigh, so. Mr. Vontae Leach?
I just wanna say I'm also against partisan election for the school board. I don't see what good purpose that serves, other than one party or another. I don't see what good it serves for our kids, for our church.
Mr. Randy?
Yes, sir. Mr. Gray?
Also, I did speak to Representative Lowry, and he did say he was gonna contact all the board members and get input. So I'm gonna say he's gonna contact you, but it wouldn't hurt if you need phone numbers to give him a call and let him know. If we send a resolution, fine, but make a phone call and let him know how we feel.
Do we need to do it?
If the board wants to pass a resolution, we could work on that and have something ready to go by the end of the meeting and amend the agenda to do that. If that's, if I'm picking up the sense of the board on this.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I moved, we moved this to an action item to take action on by the end of the meeting. Is that what I'm hearing? Possibility?
Move the, change the, amend the agendas, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
That'd be appropriate.
I've got a motion by Mr. Gentry to move to an action item. I've got a second by Mr. Henry Brewer. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries.
And that'll be at the end of the agenda? And that'll be at the end of the agenda?
Yes, sir. Update, Board of Trustees', Appointment Process. Dr. Williamson.
Mr. Chairman and the board members, you have in your board package information from Robinson Community College in terms of the Board of Trustees' Appointment Process. As you are aware, historically, the Board of Education has the right to appoint a member to that. That process, according to this document, will change. I have attached to that information the current individual serving on the Board of Trustees' for your information. So again, now those individuals will be appointed by the General Assembly.
Any questions or comments from the board? 2024 Summer Work Schedule. Dr. Williamson.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. We did include in your board package plans, again, for our 24 summer work schedule that will become effective July 1. We're sharing this as information for all staff. Those hours would be Monday through Thursday, 7:30 a.m. until 5:00 p.m., closed on Friday, half hour for lunch. All offices will be closed on July 4th, Independence Day. Sharing this for information. Any questions, concerns, please? Great.
Dr. Emanuel.
I don't have a question. I just have a thought. Would it be permissible for you to encourage the principals to stagger the lunch hour so the schools will not be closed, doors locked during the school day during the summer?
Yes.
And I did have a complaint last year.
Great. We'll take care of that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Physical monitoring review, ESR funding bonuses. Ms. Erica Sitzer.
Good evening, Chairman Lawson, Superintendent Dr. Williamson and board members. You had in your packet a letter from the Department of Public Instruction regarding an audit that was done on an ESR employee bonus that we gave to our employees. As we've mentioned numerous times, we anticipate and have experienced multiple ESR audits in different varying levels, and we're going to share those with you. As a background, DPI noted that there are 318 schools that received ESR funding, and of those, 157 or 49% use this funding to provide employee bonuses. So there was a large pool that were included in this audit. There were no deficiencies identified. It was a really clean audit. We provided all the information. There were a few questions. We were able to answer all those, and you have all of that information in your packet. We just wanted to share that, as we indicated, it was important for us to get board approval. That was one of the requirements, and the eligibility was really important process there, and we had all of that laid out and mapped out for them for this audit. And we just wanted to share for your information. And I can answer any questions anyone has.
Mr. Gentry.
Ms. Erica, I think you went over this before, but just for my clarification, how were the bonuses calculated?
So PSRC has given a bonus in three different years. The first year, it was $1,000 in June, and it was payable to all full-time and permanent part-time employees. It was calculated based on the same percentages that they're employed. So if they're 100% employed, they receive the $1,000. If they're 82, they received 82% and so forth. In the second year, we split that $1,000. Half was paid in December, half was paid in June, and in the third year, we followed that same process, half paid in December and half paid in June.
Thank you, Ms. Erica, for the job that you do every day and the ones that's in there working with you. PRC 189 Monitoring Report. Dr. Wendy Dosie-Carr.
So, good evening, Chairman Lawson, Dr. Williamson, board members. So as Erica shared, part of what the state is doing is doing monitoring visits for all the ESR funds. PSRC 189 is a funding source that is specifically for students 4th through 8th grade for science, reading and math tutoring after school. So each school receives funding from this source. So they did a visit a few, about two months ago, and sent us the report. The report showed that we have nothing lacking, that we have everything in place, and this is a support for the tutoring and also on Saturdays for some of our schools. So it is based on the number of students they have at each school in those grade spans, and they have to be students that are non-proficient on the EOG previously. Any, I'm sorry, any questions about the monitoring report?
Next, we have public comment. I have Mr. John Edward McLaurin. As you're coming up, Mr. McLaurin, you have three minutes, and you will hear a bell go So wind it up at that time.
All right, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening, board. How y'all doing this afternoon?
Good.
I was invited down here by Ms. Ocean to talk about a concern that I have with some of the students in Maxton. They have talked to me and told me they don't have a chance to play sports, are being considered to play sports because they don't have a way down here to Pembroke to play. And they had a bus coming through Maxton at one time, and they say since then, the bus has stopped coming. And I would like to know why the bus has stopped coming. Another issue that I would like to talk about is the students that go to, that were going to Townville and now going to South Side Ashpole or West Robinson or wherever you want to call it down there in Rowland. And these kids be on this bus an hour, an hour, you might as well say two hours because it's an hour, an hour going down and an hour coming back. And that is too long. I had to go down and pick up my grandson down there one time, and it only just took me 30 minutes in the car. But I can imagine how those students feel, sitting on a bus for a whole hour before they get home. According to his grandmother, one afternoon, the bus was late getting to the house. He got home about 5:30 in the afternoon, and that's too late for a child to get home to have to go to school. So I'm just saying that we need a school in Maxton. We need, we need a school in Maxton. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have Kathy Bat.
Thank you, the board, for letting me speak. North Carolina ranks 47th in the funding of public schools, and Robinson County just does not have the tax base to fund public education supplement like the wealthier counties do. The North Carolina Legislature has taken $1 billion from the public school fund and sent it to private schools since the beginning of the voucher program. This year, they're taking $191 million out of the public school fund for private schools. In addition, they've just decided to take $300 million out of the general fund, the surplus of the general fund, that is $1 billion, and not one penny of that surplus is going to public schools. The legislators, the Leandra Act has never been funded by the legislation, and that money would have saved Robinson County a lot of problems. There aren't enough teachers because teacher pay is low. There aren't even enough substitute teachers. Deferred maintenance on buildings curtailed for school programs, all of that could have been, could have been helped. Robinson County also gets money from the federal government, but the U.S. House of Representatives this year is trying to cut $22 million from a program that helps low-income counties like Robinson County. And in the paper, I read that a private company donated playground equipment, and the community helped them build it. And that is awesome. I am grateful for everything everyone has done for public schoolchildren in Robinson County, regardless of party or position. The thing is, though, every school with a billion dollars, every school in Robinson County should have a safe playground and should have fully qualified teachers and buildings with, that don't need extra maintenance. The public technical school being built in Pembroke is also great. In a county that this size, there should be more than one of those schools. That is a, out of the billion-dollar surplus, that is not even, building those schools is not even from the public school fund. That could be out of general expenses. But once that school is built, then Robinson County is going to have to maintain it. And as a former Army Aviation Maintenance Officer, I can tell you, tools are expensive and they break. I'd like to say that this board has the toughest job in the county. You're taking money, you're giving money from the county, from the commissioners, and you have to budget it responsibly so that every student gets an equal and quality, really, education. And that's very difficult with the amount of money that you've been given. So what can we do? We can first tell the legislature that we're not happy with the way that public education is being treated. Second, we can fund the Leandra Act. And last, we can vote legislator support. Thank you very much. I'm Kathy Bat, and I'm going in for North Carolina Senate.
Thank you. Next, I have Mr. Doug McBrien.
A while back, I was told that there's case law that says Mike Smith did not have to be sworn in. So I asked to find out what the case law was. It took over three months to get the name, just the name. I didn't ask for anything else, just the name, and it took over three months. And I understand that, but I do understand that Stonewall is kind of the norm. Now, each of you should know and be able to state what the case is about and why it applies, okay? Because that's part of your job. And you don't, you don't need a law degree to do that, okay? And the response can't be, well, the attorney said so, because that's just CYA. I think it's important that also the words, "Well, that's history and we need to be moving on," are kind of silly because it's still not history. Okay? You should be able to explain why the board did nothing and allowed Mike Smith to attend zero meetings for over a year and paid about $16,000 of taxpayer money. And if you don't want to look at it, fine, okay? This basically means that the board is kind of like Sergeant Schultz on Hogan's Heroes. I know nothing, I see nothing, and that's not the way you guys should be operating. That's negligence. To show how important it is to follow the policies, what if every time a child got in trouble at school, parents decided to appeal it up to the board, which is policy 1740, and provide examples when the board did not follow their own policies? Now, so how would you basically justify to hundreds of parents that it's okay to punish children for violating policies, but you can violate them and it's not, nothing's going to happen about it? Because that seems like a real double standard. Last year, I asked if I could speak, put on the agenda to actually show data about the district. Williamson and Simmons denied my request without even knowing what I was going to say. Now, I don't want to use words like cowardly, but I can't think of a better one right now. Now, you can take gains, and you guys do. You take gains in EOGs and EOC, testing as examples of how you're essentially walking on water. However, the district's been low performing for, if I remember, eight out of the last nine years. Eight out of the last nine years. Now, any gains that are made are minimal and not sustained because if they were sustained gains, then we would no longer be a low-performing district. But they're not sustained. That's the problem. My board members will put stuff on social media that, you know, well, they'll talk to anybody about any issues with the district. And if you mean it, do it. Essentially, put up or shut up. Melissa Ocean, I'm balls in your court. I'm willing to talk anytime you want. Other things that are done, like Craig Lowry told me that I twist things about the board, but I asked him in person and in email to back that up, and his response was, and I quote, "Thank you for your opinion," which is about as silly as I can ever come up with, but I can't even make that up because I have the email for it. You guys usually start each meeting with a prayer to God. You should probably take that more seriously. Jesus was humble, washing the feet of others. Have you ever made choices for politics, okay, or whatever reason, that really was not in the best interest of the students? And if you cannot say that, then you are wrong because that's not what you're doing. Do you serve the people that you are sworn to serve? Do you serve them humbly or arrogantly? I need you to think about that because the district is still in trouble and has been for years, and until you change, nothing's going to change. Have a good night.
Action items, testing calendar.
Good evening, Chairman Lawson, Superintendent Williamson and board members. We provided the 2425 testing plan in your packet last week, so I hope you've had a few minutes to look over it. Since you've had it, I am going to take a couple of minutes to explain our processes of how we come about this testing calendar. DPI provides us with an operational testing calendar in March. Once they provide that operational testing calendar, I take that and use the calendar, the school calendar that you approved, and fit our testing plan based on that calendar that you approve or the school calendar that you approve. And hence, we have the testing calendar that you see before you. Once I get that done, I, of course, submit it to my supervisor, Dr. Carr, and then we hold a committee meeting. This year, we had a principal from the elementary building, one from the middle school, and one from the high school, as well as a school test coordinator from the elementary, middle and high school, to look over and have a conversation with us about the testing calendar. We had a few changes when they came in, and once they completed it, we made the changes, updated it, and it is now or has now been presented to you for your approval. Are there any questions?
Dr. Emanuel.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the testing calendar as presented.
I've got a motion on the floor. I'm sorry. Do what? For five minutes? Can we stand in recess for five minutes? I need a vote on that. I'm declaring a recess. We'll resume in five minutes. We'll resume in five minutes. Recession, I have a, would you, go ahead.
I believe John Simmons, should John, do you want to make a motion?
No. We have a motion. Henry made the second. You're voting on Cindy Lewis has presented. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Related services contract amendments.
Good evening, Chairman Lawson, Dr. Williamson, board members. In your package, you'd have a set of amendments for related services for special education students. We are asking for approval of these amendments to help support making sure that we ensure all of our students get their related services. We had to make some amendments due to some of our providers not being able to provide services, and so having to give other providers an additional contract.
Ms. Terry Lockley.
And let me just say, I have, by accident, there's one that's in there twice. So please ignore that one, I didn't notice when I made the copies.
So that was one of my questions.
The second and third ones in this package are duplicates.
They are.
Yeah. So that was one of my questions. The next one is, do any of these providers provide adaptive PE services?
That is actually, we are training our PE teachers to provide adaptive PE services now, so they are going to be starting to provide those services.
Which, which PE teachers?
That, well, depends on the school. Right now, we only have certain schools, and I can't, I have to look at who is currently receiving adaptive PE, but we only have a few students at this moment that actually need it. We train almost every PE teacher in the district. A few, about a month ago, we started that, so that we do not have to contract for those services, so that if there's a child at the school that needs the services, we'll have somebody at the school that can provide those.
But there's an evaluation process too, right?
Right. And that's a training we've also worked on giving them, so they can do that. So we've also provided adaptive PE evaluations with outside providers now, but now we have an evaluation tool that we're starting to use for adaptive PE.
So we're doing, we're now doing evaluation for adaptive PE internally?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Brewer.
And I think we still have a contract that's active for those services too, don't we?
No, not for those services, no.
Mr. Brewer.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we accept amendment one for contracted physical occupational therapy services.
Mr. Chair, you can approve this entire package as presented if you want to, for all of these.
Okay.
Excuse me, Chair. I'm, what we're getting.
Dr. Emanuel, will you cut yours off, or you?
I was gonna.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to ask if these increases are in keeping with what's usual and acceptable in terms of the additional cost?
Yes. So some of our service providers, as I shared, were not able to provide services because they didn't have enough staff, so we had to utilize other service providers to provide some of the support. So it just, it essentially took money from one contract to put it in another so that we could provide, continue providing those services.
Henry, get back home. Dr. Emanuel. Okay, I need you to hit your, get it? Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm trying.
I second Mr. Henry's motion.
All right. I have a motion.
If I may, I'm sorry. Was the motion changed to approve the package? Okay, sorry. Thank you.
I've got a motion by Mr. Henry Brewer to approve related service contract amendments package. And I've got a second by Dr. Emanuel.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Middle school AD supplement increase sports. Ms. Erica Setzer.
Good evening again. You should find in your packet, excuse me, a comparison of where we're currently paying our middle school athletic directors and the amount we're proposing to increase that to, due to the addition of volleyball, soccer, wrestling, and track at the middle school
Mr. Vontae Leach.
So moved, we did add a lot of sports to our middle school sports. Athletic directors and our coaches have more, more responsibilities themselves now, and we haven't had an increase in a while, so I accept Ms. Erica's proposal to supplement PRC, PSRC athletic supplement sheet.
I've got a motion by Mr. Vontae Leach on the AD supplement increase. Mr. Craig, as a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five planning budget, Ms. Erica Setzer.
Good evening again. Most of these conversations were had, and these discussions at our board meeting along with our county commissioners. I provided a copy of the PowerPoint that we presented there with the data and the additional request to our county, along with the summary of the current year we're in, and our local and capital outlay and enterprise funding for next year. Now, I can answer any questions anyone has.
Mr. Terry Lockley.
Is the travel stipend for APs still, is it something like $200 a semester or $400 a year?
It's $400 a year, $200 twice a year.
$400 a year?
Yes, sir.
That's for all APs?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything that we can do to increase that?
Yes, sir. We can have that conversation, and we don't have a lot of, we're room in our local budget for that at this point. We're actually, once we know what our state budget is, we can come back together and talk about some of those issues that, we just don't know what gaps we'll have to fill now with local funding, because we don't have, we just received planning budgets for state funds yesterday, and as you know, those may or may not be valid if there's any changes in the General Assembly.
Okay, so that's.
That can be revisited at any point in the year, yes, sir.
But that's something that could be paid out of state funds?
No, sir. The travel is coming out of local, that's why I say we know what our state gaps are and what other local we have available, then we can discuss any changes there.
So we did have a meeting with the county commissioners on, and there was some discussion about maybe increasing our, you know, what we receive locally. Was there any update on that?
They haven't, they haven't went before to approve their budget yet.
No. I have had a conversation with Ms. Blue, and she's indicated that part of their planning process, she's waiting on feedback directly from the commissioners. I believe that'll be something they submit at their June meeting.
Thank you. John?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, I've got a motion, second on the floor. Mr. Gentry.
The school grant, I've noticed that that is not in the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five.
That grant is ending?
Ending.
It's ending.
Dr. Emanuel.
I, this is a plea. I plead with the construction committee, the finance committee, and Ms. Erica, the superintendent, please relook at paving again. I know that you have a list of priorities of what needs to be done, but I plead with you to add more money or more emphasis on paving. I get more requests, and I know that we're not on the list for one of my schools, but I plead with you to relook at that and add some more money to paving and then capital outlay. Please, thank you.
Okay. I've got a motion from Mr. John Simmons, and my second is from Trey Britt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Monthly financial.
Budget amendments, please, sir.
I done checked it, Ms. Erica.
The budget amendments were presented for state and enterprise funds, and I can answer any questions anyone has regarding that at this time.
Mr. John Simmons.
Ms. Erica, has anything changed?
No, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
I've got Mr. John Simmons with a motion, I've got Mr. Henry Brewer with a second. Budget amendments twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Monthly financial report, Ms. Erica Setzer.
I have included the monthly financial report as well in your packet, and I can answer any questions.
Anything changed, Ms. Erica?
No, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
I've got a motion by Mr. John Simmons to approve monthly financial report. I've got a second by Ms. Melissa Ocean. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Mr. Trey Britt.
I moved it to Board of Education for the Pope Schools of Robinson County, going to closed session for the purposes of discussing certified and classified personnel, North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A1 and 6, and to consult with attorney retained by the board in order to preserve attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the Board of Education for the Pope Schools of Robinson County, North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A1 and 3, and to consider student matters that are considered with North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A1 and 115C-402 and 200 U.S. Code 1232G.
All, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Second, Mr. Vontae Leach. All those opposed, motion carries and closed session.
One would need approval of certified personnel.
So movements, Chairman?
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Vontae, a second by Mr. Trey Britt. To approve the certified personnel as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Twenty twenty four extended employment.
Next, we have twenty twenty four extended employment personnel.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I've got.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, can you hold on one second? Um, for, can we go back to the first one? I'm, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
On the certified personnel list, we need a, uh, motion to approve the contract, the, the, uh, administrators who were listed on page three for contract renewals for assistant principals, director of federal programs and art supervisors. Those contracts need to be approved for four-year terms.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mr. John Simmons and a second by Ms. Munro to approve the, um, four-year contracts.
For assistant principals.
Assistant principals, art supervisors and director of.
Federal programs.
Federal programs.
On page three.
On page three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
That's for your contracts.
Four years contracts. Motion passes. Okay, now we're gonna get back to where we ran on next.
Yep, now we're on.
Twenty twenty four extended employment. Vontae had made a motion, who was, who was second? Mr. William Gentry with a second. Mr. Trey Britt is recusing himself. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
And that motion carries ten oh with Mr. Britt recused.
Yes. Next is certified personnel additions. I need a motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
I've got Vontae with a motion. I got Mr. Gentry with a second on certified personnel additions.
And you're.
I'm recusing myself. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
And that should be noted as ten nothing with Mr. Lawson recused.
Yes, sir. Next, we have twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five contract renewals, one-year terms.
So move, Mr. Chair.
I got Mr. Vontae with a motion. I got Mr. Trey with a second.
And, and that's for a motion to approve these for one-year terms.
Yes, for one-year terms.
And that motion is for one-year terms. And Mr. Craig Lowery and Mr. Henry Roor are recusing themselves. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
That's nine zero.
Yes, sir. Dr. Williamson.
Chairman, the board members, I share with you this morning that we have two principalships opening. One at Tanglewood Elementary. It is my recommendation and asking you to approve Dr. Jessica Floyd as the new principal of Tanglewood Elementary School, please.
So.
Second, I've got a motion by, or exception by Mr. William Gentry. I got a second by Mr. Vontae Leach. All those in favor of Dr. Williamson's appointment? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Great, I've asked Dr. Floyd to, to greet you and I come up and say something so you can put, um, the name in the face together, please, very quickly.
Good evening, nice to see you all. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm looking forward to the work ahead.
Uh huh.
Mr. Chair and members, also I'm recommending Dr. Renee Steele to become the new principal at WH Knuckles. Dr. Steele presently serving as our director, director of licensing. I'm requesting your approval, please.
Okay. Mr. Gentry has made the motion on Dr. Williamson's request as an appointment to WH Knuckles. Mr. Brewer made the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Dr. Steele, if you'll come and greet the board, please.
Good evening, I am humbled and honored to be entrusted with the social, emotional and academic, uh, success of the students of WH Knuckles Elementary School. I look forward to working with the community, staff, parents to, uh, continue to work for the greater good of the students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I need a motion for approval for closed session minutes. For four, for four eleven and four twenty-three. Mr. Mr. Vontae made the motion for approvals for closed session on four eleven twenty-four and four twenty-three twenty-four. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries.
And that was Mr. Leach and Mr. Gentry? Okay.
Next, I need a motion and a second for student transfers.
The motion.
Question?
Oh, no, I was making the motion.
Motion? You made the second? Okay, I've got Ms. Munro made the motion to approve transfers. Mr. Henry made the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Next, we have the resolution, opposition of House Bill, uh, ten sixty-eight. Attorney, Mr. Richard Schwartz.
I'll read a draft resolution, um, for consideration by the board. Uh, this is Public Schools of Robinson County Board of Education, resolution in opposition to partisan elections for the Public Schools of Robinson County Board of Education. Whereas the history and tradition of Robinson, of Robinson County has been to hold nonpartisan elections for seats on the Public Schools of Robinson County Board of Education. And whereas the nonpartisan tradition has fostered a climate of mutual respect and cooperation among all board members who put partisanship aside and make their number one priority the education of our children. And whereas the tradition of nonpartisan school board elections in Robinson County has worked very well and should not be altered without a compelling justification. And whereas under House Bill ten sixty-eight, members of the Public Schools of Robinson County Board of Education would be elected on a partisan basis beginning in twenty twenty-six. And whereas under House Bill ten sixty-eight, the method of electing three at-large members of the school board would be altered and would also be changed to partisan elected. And whereas introducing partisanship into Public Schools of Robinson County Board of Education elections could adversely affect what has been a successful and collaborative working arrangement among board. and collaborative working arrangement among board members. And whereas, House Bill ten sixty-eight was introduced without any prior consultation with the current elected members of this school board. And whereas, House Bill ten sixty-eight would require school board members to run for election in both primary and potential second primary and the general elections, rather than only once under the current method of election. And whereas, under House Bill ten sixty-eight, school board elections would take place in November and newly elected members would take office on the first Monday in December. And whereas, under the current practice, pursuant to Chapter six oh five of the Session Laws of nineteen eighty-seven as amended by Chapter six fourteen of the Session Laws of nineteen ninety-one, elections for the Public Schools of Robinson County Board of Education take place at the same time as the primary election for county officers and newly elected members take office at the first regular board meeting in July. And whereas, for education purposes, it's preferable that new elected, newly elected school board members take office in July prior to the beginning of the school year, rather than in December, in the middle of the school year, and just prior to the annual school budget process. Now therefore, be it resolved. One, that the Board of Education of the Public Schools of Robinson County and each individually elected member thereof formally expresses its opposition to partisan elections for the Public Schools of Robinson County Board of Education. Two, that the Board of Education respectfully requests that House Bill ten sixty-eight be tabled or voted against in any General Assembly Committee or in any floor action in either the House or Senate. Three, that the Board of Education respectfully requests that our local legislators oppose any legislation introducing partisan elections for the Public Schools of Robinson County Board of Education. And four, that the board chair or board attorney provide our local legislators and each member of the North Carolina General Assembly with a copy of this resolution adopted by the Public Schools of Robinson County Board of Education this fourteenth day of May twenty twenty-four by a vote indicating the votes for or against.
I need a motion on the resolution and a second. I've got, I've got Mr. Vontae Leach with the motion on the resolution. That has been drafted by our attorney, Mr. Schwartz. I've got a second from Mr. Craig Lowery. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries eleven-zero.
Thank you.
One comment, curriculum meeting, five-thirty, Thursday. Yeah, if you're not here, you're gonna have to check in with Dr. Manuel before you come back, is all I can say. Is there anything else we're missing? All the dates and things you got? You- Yeah, I, we, yeah, we've hit that. Thank you. I've got a motion for Mr. Trey Britt to adjourn. I got a second by Mr. Vontae Leach. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.